Meeting to order. If you can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, we are going to hold our public hearing for the 2018-19 school budget. And thus, I will turn it over to Mr. Penella.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Bazinski and I will present the budget hearing. We start mostly everything that we do here with an overview. So after we install the update from Adobe, we'll get to the overview. So we'll talk about our ACSD strategic plan, year one in review, and the 2018-19 proposed budget, going into the property tax rate contingency budget, and then our Board of Education vote and Board member election. So as we continue with our mission, we always like to keep this at the forefront of everything we do. You know, we're preparing all students to excel in a dynamic world through the development of their abilities to reason, solve problems, apply knowledge, communicate, and collaborate effectively. This was really the foundation for our strategic plan, which, as you know, took over a year to write because it was very comprehensive and data-driven. And I told you you couldn't trust me to drive this. But it was, it involved survey, community surveys, stakeholder group meetings, an assessment of strengths and weaknesses throughout the district. We looked at qualitative data as well as quantitative data when putting together our priorities. So in terms of the structure of the plan, we have three priorities, 15 initiatives, and 36 action steps. In year one, we focused on three priorities and seven action steps. And the board has had the opportunity to see our building action plans in their entirety as well as updates from all of our buildings, athletics, and special education. And tonight, Dr. Griesmer will be also presenting about the middle school and the strategic initiatives for the current year. We focus on three priority areas: learning and achievement, student life, and Amherst's pride. Priority one, you know, this is again a recap of some of the things you've seen and heard about this year. We had some high-quality professional development, including consultants from the outside as well as homegrown developed professional development internally. Some progressive technology, including some really elite Google pilots and STEAM integration at all of our buildings, whether it's Project Lead the Way in the middle school or STEAM Mondays at Smallwood or work with Mrs., Mr. Moser at Windermere and Lindsay Bett to integrate OZABots and some of the things they're doing there. And then, of course, we have a strong tradition and pride with our arts, not only the performing arts but as well as the fine arts. So we continue looking at priority two, student life. We've had some really impressive presentations for the students and communities this year to highlight a few. The high school featured the Challenge to Change as well as the Upstander Program. Challenge to Change, as you know, brought students together from several districts in the region to talk about race and race relations, not only in the town of Amherst but in the greater region of Western New York. Upstander Program was a program to try to stop cyberbullying in conjunction with Siena College. We were one of the first local area, local host sites for a movie called Screenagers, of kids growing up in the digital age. And then, of course, we have a capital construction project where construction for Phase One has begun and Phase Two and Three planning is ongoing and will begin over the next couple of years. And then, as we look at Amherst's pride, there are certainly a number of things to be proud of. I picked a few of them, starting in no particular order. But we have the Amherst Central High School being designated as a reward school by the State Education Department for the third consecutive year. Mr. Pometlars is being recognized by the Buffalo Philharmonic, excuse me, Philharmonic and ECMEA for the Excellence in Music Education. Mrs. Claston in the middle school being designated as a master teacher for the statewide program. Four sectional championships, increased activity on social media, a new website, an award for our collaboration with Food Pantry and St. Paul's Lutheran, the Tigers then collaboration being recognized by Erie County Association of School Boards, and so on and so forth. That's just a few sources of pride for us this year. So we continue to keep our strategic plan and our mission at the forefront when we're talking about, you know, the funding for the school district and programs we want to be able to offer. And it's through the board's support as well as the work of Mrs. Bazinski and the Administrative Cabinet that we're able to offer a balanced 18-19 proposed budget.
Thank you. So we'll review some of the aspects of our budget, all of which have been developed with the board throughout the past several months. To start, we have our property tax levy with a tax cap compliant increase of 2.54%. Our state aid is budgeted with the information we see from the New York State Legislature on March 31st. In addition, we further increased our anticipated revenues in the area of BOSI's aid as we are planning a aidable technology purchase this fiscal year, which will result in an increase in aid for next year. Misleading use revenues are projected to increase about 7%, the majority of which are due to increases in interest earnings and Medicaid reimbursements. To round out our revenue budget, we are recommending the use of $260,000 worth of revenues and just under $1 million in unappropriated fund balance for a total allocation of $1.24 million.
I think it's important to note $500,000 of that is designated as contingency, of which we hope not to spend, but being self-insured with our health insurance. You know, last year, this was a practice we started. And we match it on the expenditure side, so there's no impact on the taxpayers, but it allows us a little flexibility should our claims come in higher than our budgeted amount in our self-funded health insurance.
Overall, we have a proposed revenue budget including a tax cap compliant levy, projected aid, and appropriation of transfers and appropriated balance of $58,552,000, which is a 2.18% increase over current year. On the expenditure side, we begin with the discussion of personnel, which are our contractual increases for our current negotiated contracts as well as some open contracts that are in ultimatum negotiations now, as well as our mandatory benefits. ERS is projected to remain relatively flat as the rate is decreasing slightly from 15.3% to 14.9%. TRS is increasing a little more than $200,000 as the rate was increasing slightly. Our health insurance projections are based on current year utilization and our trends with an increase in next year's budget over current year of about $500,000. Workers' compensation is also scheduled to increase about $72,000 due to current year utilization. As Mr. Penella mentioned, we do still have $500,000 in the contingency line on the expenditure side to help us plan for the unplanned and the unexpected. And this is fully supported with existing fund balance, so it yields zero impact to the taxpayers. Instruction is scheduled to increase about 8% and BOSI's is projected to increase about 11%. Both increases are due to general education and special education student programming. Our transportation expenses are projected to go up just over 1% based on our current contract. And our debt service is scheduled to decrease about 13% due to favorable borrowing for past capital projects and low interest rates as well as the application of premiums for interest payments for next year. And then, much of that was due to the excellent bond rating that Amherst holds. Through our budget development process, we were able to identify some areas of savings. About $350,000 of that comes from retirements and salary breakage. Changes were attrition-based when they were reductions as well as restructures in two district offices, some changes in special education programming based on student needs, some overall changes in program based on student interest, and reductions in material and supply budgets across the district. With staff reductions, we had mentioned savings of about $264,000. And again, these were based on student programming or attrition-based reduction. All of these projections leave us with a final expenditure budget of $58,552,000. It's an increase of $1.2 million or 2.18% over current year. Each year, districts are required to break our proposed expenditures down into two different formats to share with our taxpayers. The first one is a tripartite budget, which breaks our expenditures into three main areas: administrative, capital, and program expenditures. As you can see in the tripartite budget, we have a reduction in expenditures in areas of administration and capital, which shows an increased focus of our dollars going to our program expenses. The second budget is a component budget which further breaks down our expenditures into five parts: general support, instruction, transportation, employee benefits, and debt and transfers. And here, you can see that the largest portion of our budget, 50, almost 56%, is directed to our instruction expenses. And our second-largest expenditure is almost 22% going towards employee benefits. Included in our proposed budget is the continuation of our capital outlay project. This is a project that every district is eligible to complete each year and must be limited to a $100,000 expenditure where building aid is received the following year. Our current project for the 18-19 school year is scheduled to be the repair replacement of the curtain glass wall system in the middle school district office vestibule. And this project is in line with the broader safety goals the district has for hardening all interior and exterior doorways as well as enhancing interior and exterior communication systems. Our three-year budget does show a balanced budget for 18-19 as we are required to do. And we do identify deficits for the following two years. These estimates are conservative. And we will work, continue to work to minimize expenses and maximize revenues so that those projected gaps become smaller and eventually closed as we come to those fiscal years. We wanted to take a moment to share with you the information on Amherst's expenditures per pupil. You can find this information directly on the New York State Education Department website. But it will demonstrate Amherst spending less than $19,000 per pupil. A district similar to our size is spending just under $22,000, while on average, districts across New York State are spending over $23,000. So we are about $4,500 per student less than the average New York State district. So what does this mean for our, meaning our taxpayers? Our current rate per thousand, our tax rate, was just over $19.12 per $1,000 assessed value. With a $35.8 million tax levy, we are projecting that the tax rate will increase just over 45 cents per thousand or 2.4% to a total of $19.58 per thousand. This information is preliminary, and we use estimated information from the town of Amherst's Assessor's Office. The rate and the tax rules will be finalized in August. And that's when we'll be able to share our finalized rate. Districts are also required to share with taxpayers what a contingency budget would look like in the event that our proposed budget does not pass. A contingent budget does have many restrictions, one of which is that the tax levy cannot be increased over the current year amount. You can't purchase new equipment. You can't complete any nonessential maintenance. One of the biggest effects that a contingent budget has on our community is that groups are not allowed to use our facilities without bearing the full cost of those facilities. So currently, we might have groups that use the facility at no charge or at a reduced charge. When the district is under a contingency budget, we're no longer allowed to do that. And we have to make sure that any groups that use our facilities are paying for every last penny of the cost to operate that room or that building, the maintenance and care of the facility. If we were under a contingent budget, even with a 0% tax levy increase, we would still see an increase in expenditures of almost 1.4%. So that leads us to the questions that we will be asking of our community and taxpayers on May 15th. Proposition one is the budget of $58,552,000, which does reflect a tax cap compliant tax levy increase. And three Board of Education seats. We do have three candidates running. Incumbent and current Board Vice President is Jean Ernst, newcomer Miss Lynn Arrington, and also incumbent and current Board President, Mr. Paul Simon. Information about the candidates can be found in the district newsletter, which is going to the post office tomorrow. So it will be in everyone's hands in just a day or two. It will be available on the district website tomorrow if it's not already now.
It's already there.
It's already there now. Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions? All right, with that, we will share our final slide, which are the details of our vote, May 15, Tuesday, May 15, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Amherst Central High School South Gymnasium. We will ask community members to weigh in on the budget in three seats. And if they are not available that day, they can obtain absentee ballots from the district clerk prior to that day.
Hopefully, you're all able to come out and vote. And you'll notice we have the chicken barbecue once again that will be taking place as a fundraiser for field hockey. We also have an orchestra concert later that night. Prior to the concert, around the dinner hour or shortly after, Mr. Pendrak and Mrs. Gustoni have arranged for some of our students to set up a little quartet in the gym to provide some music in addition to the art show as our community members are coming in to vote. So hopefully, you'll be able to come out and vote and see those additions to our budget vote.
Is it, will there be a survey? Another exit survey?
Yes.
Has there been a pass?
We're planning to exit poll again. And I believe when we discussed it a couple meetings ago, we decided to keep it relatively consistent to make sure that we can identify trends over time for the multiple years that we do. So it should look familiar if you've participated in the past. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we will close the public hearing on the budget and move into our regular meeting. We have no visitors listening who's signed in wishing to speak. I don't know if we have any special committee meetings. And then we will move right into the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. I'm pleased to welcome newly appointed Dr. John Griesmer. Just successfully defended his dissertation. So the doctor is here with Mr. Crombie from the middle school to give us an update about the middle school strategic plan and the many successes they've had in year one.
Dr. Griesmer. Thank you.
He said, "Dr."
Yeah, right.
Anyone not feeling well during the presentation?
Thank you.
All my days are.
Well, thank you, Mr. Penella, for those kind words. And thank you, Board, for allowing us the opportunity to present our strategic plan update for you tonight. We have five tasks in particular that we'd like to highlight. And to set the stage for those tasks and lay out an agenda, we have a short clip for you that definitely employs the use of our most famous favorite Amherst Middle School-related song. I have the first task that we'd like to highlight. And it falls under the priority of learning and achievement and the initiative of professional development. And that is, from all of our teacher survey data over last year, we found a priority in creating professional development opportunities with options and with differentiation for our staff and mind. And we've gotten about that a couple of ways. And one way was to take what I already do in my monthly Professional Learning Club or PLC meetings with all staff. I run them every Friday. A different group comes each Friday, and they meet once a month, was to go from a one-topic agenda, if you will. Last year was all about the Thoughtful Classroom Observation Framework. So it was appropriate that we all looked at the same thing. To move towards, in the first semester, a choice opportunity between taking a look at mindfulness in education or Kegan Cooperative Learning. And those are two hot topics right now and enduring topics, quite frankly, in education. So that was the first semester. Then we broadened it even more in the second semester, if you would, Mr. Crombie. The second semester approach was to essentially provide our faculty with complete, free topical rein. So it was, go ahead and take a look at whatever you want to as it relates to professional development and your craft and your interest. I only set one condition, and that was no one works alone. We have, you know, between 10 to 15 people in each group. And that was one thing very important to me because if you're working alone, you're no longer in a professional learning community. You're just studying something in isolation. And I've had folks in groups of two and groups of five and groups of 10 come up with some really great things to take a look at. And in this clip, you're going to see one of the fruitful conversations relative to a group of art teachers, math AIS teachers, and technology teachers who decided to figure out ways to incorporate more STEAM into their instruction. And in particular, they're working with an assignment that our newest hire, by the way, Mrs. Miss Jillian Roser, who took over for Mary Julia's retirement, an art teacher, one of the projects she's working on. And you'll hear Mr. Karas and Mr. Morse lend their thoughts about how to enhance that.
How about doing a circle? It's interesting. Would you use a circle like that?
Well, again, the material would be the biggest thing. It's just, what do you want material? But it's very simple. That's easy. I mean, smaller circles, complexes. Larger circles, we use a veil with string attached. And it's a bit larger and things like that. So I don't see that being a real issue. It's hoping to be what we need.
Okay.
And then you'll get the kids saying, "How do we delegate?" And different types of projects. Pieces to them. And then, what do they mean to learn? And how about, how about, you know? Easy to do.
You're talking about, you can do the same thing that you're going to do. And you're talking about the reflection on the X-axis, reflection on the Y-axis.
Right.
Now, if you're getting the pieces and they're making as much as they can. You could actually, you can paper some parts of the tail.
Okay. Okay, dude?
So I apologize for the background noise. The good problem that I had is there were about four of those conversations going on simultaneously throughout the PLC. But hopefully, you were able to catch the gist of what Bruce Karas and Tom Morse were saying and see that when you allow a group of educators to sit and talk about something beyond the day-to-day grind but a potentially interesting new idea, really rich and collaborative conversation comes out of that. So I'm very excited that that took place for us. Another way that we addressed the strategic plan this year through priority one, learning and achievement, has to do with this task right here that says, "Explore and provide more time to implement and evaluate PD." Time is often the big factor. And what I just described for you takes place in a pre-existing amount of time that I've set aside. So the challenge was, can we do more? And I have to give full credit to our department chairs, who, taking a look at this task, were totally in favor of carving out some time of their monthly meetings to provide content-specific PDs. So our Science Department Chair to roll out some science-specific PD, et cetera, et cetera. With the idea that they're going to take that topic that's interesting to their department and weave it into our summer superintendent's conference days where we anticipate our department chairs having a half-day section of time to fully flesh that out, which is also exciting.
All right. So now we're going to move on to the next priority, student life. And we're focusing on the implementation of positive and proactive classroom management strategies. So on the left-hand side there, you'll see therapeutic crisis intervention for schools, known as TCIS. And this year, we have 10 professionals continuing to cultivate their knowledge base on understanding de-escalation techniques as well as physical restraints to ensure the safety of our students. So that's an increase in participation. In the center there, we have CRT, Cultureally Responsive Teaching, where we have four teachers participating in this district initiative. And then on the right-hand side, we have continued our book slash conversation club. And I'm proud to announce that we have about 37 participants, approximately one-third of our faculty and staff. And this year's title, which is a good one, "IGEN: Why Today's Super-Connected Kids Are Growing Up Less Rebellious, More Tolerant, Less Happy, and Completely Unprepared for Adulthood", with an asterisk, and what does that mean for the rest of us? And I have to say, as the facilitator of this group of professionals, we found it very beneficial to engage in rich and robust conversations, often centered around Box Two of the Thoughtful Classroom Effective Framework, and really understand who is our audience. Today's kids are different than five years ago, 10 years ago, especially since the advent of smartphones in 2012. We have noticed as educators, possibly as parents, and where research is suggesting, a decrease in the human experience due to the fact that our students, our kids, and some of us adults, quite frankly, are socializing more and more through our handheld phones as opposed to, you know, rural communication amongst another human being. So we found this very beneficial by participating in this book club. And we always look through an instructional lens. How is this conversation? How is this knowledge based on our conversations from the book slash conversation club going to affect our students today? Moving on. So our focus on Tigers Care continues. Here we have Mrs. Buziak, who is a relatively new teacher at Amherst Middle School. And she has been inspired by the Tigers Care tenants and has implemented a proactive classroom management approach. And I will let her do the talking.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Buziak. I teach eighth grade English here at Amherst Middle School. Over the summer, my co-teacher and I wanted to come up with a plan to showcase some of our students for the character education that they display each and every day in our classrooms, on the hallways, just in general. So this is our Flying Tigers of the Month board. Each month, we showcase five students, one from each of our class periods. And we talk about the traits that they embodied for that month. And with that, they receive some wonderful rewards. They have an email home, an ice cream pass. They have their picture displayed on our board. And they are nominated for a Tiger paw through the main office. This is based on not so much grades, but rather the character that they display and the overall good AMS Tiger. Another strategy that I employ in my classroom is Flying Tigers Top Five. Basically, what I did is brainstorm the five things that I want my students to come prepared every day to have. I would like them to be on time, come prepared, have their homework done, swag points, which I'll talk about a little bit later, and to also integrate the Tigers Care into our everyday classroom activities. Basically, this is a class competition between our five class periods. And it's a way to add a little bit of competition, but also motivation for the class to do well as a whole. Every five weeks, they have a class reward for whoever wins. Some of the rewards that we've had were picking your seats for the quarter, an ice cream party, and the last one that we'll have is a pizza party for the entire class. The last strategy I employ in my classroom is called Show Your Swag. You may have noticed swag points on our Flying Tigers Top Five board. Why I introduce this in my classroom is because a lot of the times, students this age are immersed in technology. They're stuck behind their phones, and that's where they do a lot of their interaction. What I wanted to do is to create a system for their interpersonal skills that they will utilize not only in today, but high school and in their career someday. What it stands for is Sit Up Straight, Watch The Speaker, Ask Questions, and Give A 100%. When I use this whole group, I can just say, Check Your Swag, and they're able to straighten up, make sure they're watching me, and make sure they're giving me 100% of their attention. I also utilize this in partner work and group work.
So as you can see, this is one of many examples that our teachers utilize, our Tigers Care tenants. And the fact that we have them visible at the forefront of what we do at Amherst Middle School, it continues to prove positive for the benefit of our students.
So another task that we decided to focus on goes back to priority one, learning and achievement. And this has to do with curriculum development. And as you can see there, it says that we decided to endeavor to provide time to develop, update, and/or vertically align our curriculum six through eight. So not only is it beneficial for the two sixth-grade math teachers to know what each other is doing, but it would follow that that should flow nicely into seventh grade and then eighth grade. And when we began our partnership with Dr. Lynn Shanahan this year relative to sixth-grade ELA, one of the things we talked about was vertical alignment. And an idea came out of that discussion that basically thought, before we go down the road of six, seven, eight, it would be really great to know where fifth grade is leaving things off currently and where we need to pick up. And I have to give a big thanks to Dr. Shanahan, Dr. Schoenfeld, Mr. Lewis, and Mrs. Flanagan, who were very supportive of the idea of putting representatives from Smallwood's fifth grade, Windermere's fifth grade, and our sixth grade together for two mornings of rich conversation and sort of comparative discussion, which really helped get our partnership off on the right foot in terms of refining our sixth-grade curriculum. And don't just take my word for it. This is Mrs. Maureen Geibl, a sixth-grade reading teacher.
My name is Maureen Geibl. I teach sixth-grade reading on the journey team here at the middle school. As you know, the district has been working really hard to align curriculum from K to five and six to 12 over a number of years. One area of need that we found between fifth and sixth grade is the need to kind of bridge that gap between what goes on in fifth grade and what goes on in sixth grade. Through our partnership with Dr. Lynn Shanahan, representatives from fifth-grade ELA and sixth-grade ELA were able to meet this year. We shared skills, strategies, and assessment tools that can be used to bridge that gap between fifth and sixth grade and further align our instruction and improve the services that we give to kids in fifth and sixth grade. We're really excited about this partnership. We hope that it can continue and we can further refine our instruction and help the kids like we always like to do.
And moving on to what I believe is our final task of the five this evening that we're highlighting, we pivot over to student life. And based on teacher survey data again, one of the ideas that resonated very clearly is that we have great student-teacher relationships, but let's strive to make them even better. Can we find more opportunities for all of us to engage as a school or an entire grade level? And we have, I believe, five things that we want to talk about briefly here that we've added this year, starting with a visit May 11th from renowned illustrator and Buffalo local-turned-West Coast, I believe, Shane Evans, who was first coming for the author visit to our elementaries that same week. And through a common contact in our building, he expressed a willingness to stay another day and come speak to our entire school for an hour and a half in the morning, talking about the illustrative process, his journey, et cetera. He is, if you were to Google him, you would see he has many, many books that he has illustrated and is highly anticipated as it relates to coming to our school. Second, we have been doing Bald for Bucks for a few years now. And typically, our celebration day has been held after dismissal for participating students, their families, and maybe some close friends who want to stay after and support them. And the organizers of this event in our school, primarily Mr. Mansfield, Mrs. Choman, Mr. Johnson, came to me and asked whether I'd consider mirroring what some other districts do, where they put the whole school together for the hair-cutting celebration. And I thought about that for a moment and was taken aback. Wow, that's a lot of people watching this. But they then very quickly said, we've seen it done in other schools. It becomes a participative thing for the whole group. It's such an important thing, and they were so right. And as it relates to our strategic plan, that's another thing that gives us a chance to come together for a really good cause. So that will happen later in May in the afternoon. Whole school, kind of like, I believe they had a plan for our geography B, if you've stopped by to see that, where the whole school watches 10 kids participate, but they have opportunities to participate themselves. So look forward to that and feel free to join us when you see that announcement come out.
So the next thing we would like to share with all of you this evening is that our seventh-grade class had the opportunity to participate in a Buffalo Sabres open practice. However, hockey wasn't the only highlight of the experience. While there, students had the opportunity to learn about how the infusion of science and technology has changed game over the years, especially in the arena of the equipment. Stronger, lighter players, as well as the hockey sticks, shoulder pads, et cetera. In addition, Marty Barron, a former Buffalo Sabre, as well as Kevin Adams articulated their knowledge of angles and how their knowledge of angles helped them approach the game and become better hockey players as time moved down. And then also, the director of the pre-, post-, as well as in-game presentation was there, and she shared with all of us all of the human capital it takes to produce that two-minute video clip in the beginning of the game, the post-game show, as well as all of the interactive activities that they have in the game. And where it takes approximately 20 or 30 hours for each game to make sure it is there for all of us that go to the games still, experience, a positive experience still. Well, we'll see what happens next year, right? However, prior to the field trip, the students engaged in physics-based lessons utilizing the program, EBRify, that was produced by the NHL for area science teachers. And they engaged in lessons, for example, how to take the physics behind an NHL slapshot and how to calculate the speed of the slapshot. But what was most rewarding for me personally as an educational leader of Amherst Middle School is that the bus ride home, as a fan of hockey as well as a science teacher for 10 years, I truly, my takeaway was that our kids were engaging in conversations with their teachers on the bus ride and with one another, centered around hockey. That was cool. That was awesome. Can we do more of this, the stuff that, you know, the lessons previous to the actual field trip? So for me, that was really rewarding to see. In addition to the Buffalo Sabres, specifically the Buffalo Sports theme, we had a Buffalo Bandit stop by Amherst Middle School, where we had a whole school assembling. And they delivered a positive message centered around bullying, character development, as well as adopting a healthy lifestyle. You may know this gentleman on the light on the left, excuse me, is Patrick Hammer, Channel Two meteorologist. He stopped by Amherst Middle School to reinforce several of the weather concepts that our seventh graders are currently studying, such as condensation nuclei, warm fronts, cooling fronts, et cetera. And they did ask, and this just happened just last week, when will spring arrive? And he assured us that the April showers that we have yet to see will eventually boost up the May flowers. So that was good to see. And that was, that occurred due to a parent being in the business, expressing an idea, and due to that communication with our families and their teachers, this came to be for our seventh-grade class. It was a pretty cool experience. Picture there on the left, sixth-grade wonder experience. Our sixth graders in this past February engaged in discussions and activities just before, I believe, the winter break, centered around our Tigers Care tenants. And they watched the movie Wonder. But they took their discussions and what they learned by engaging in these activities and correlated Tigers Care tenants to the character as well as the plot of the movie. And after those activities, they engaged in ice cream socials as well as a pancake breakfast. And you're going to see a video in a few moments illustrating that. But the takeaway there is, once again, students left that experience being happier and being kinder. And be kind is one of the takeaways from the movie, one of the taglines if you've watched it. Very emotional movie, quite frankly, especially as a parent as well as an educator. So I do highly recommend that. On the right-hand side are some pictures of our whole-school activity night. This evening, like I said, it was kind of meant to break up the school year a little bit. And students had the opportunity to engage in a game room so they can socialize with friends, play Monopoly, checkers, et cetera, dine on some food, have some cotton candy. Picture there to the right, some ladies enjoying DDR, which I learned that is Dance Dance Revolution. I did not take a turn because I was busy in the hockey nets because students had an opportunity to take slapshots on their assistant physical and engage in a hockey tournament. That was pretty cool. But the takeaway here from this evening, and they went and did win at games, a standard dance, you name it. Kids really enjoyed themselves. But the takeaway here is that, once again, another opportunity for our students to engage, we put cell phones down, engage in human experience with one another, as well as engage with the 10 to 15 teachers that we had there on this particular evening. So what we're going to do now, ladies and gentlemen, is watch a video, a quick four-minute video capturing all of the student/teacher relationship opportunities that we had, that we shared with our student body. I hope you enjoy it.
With that, as always, we have to leave this super community. And we will gladly take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. We will need a motion for new business items.
I have a motion for new business items. G1, A through C, 2, A through C, 3, D and F.
He's a second.
My second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving new business items, G1, A through E, 2, A through C, and 3, D and F, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries, 7-0. Mr. Cossidy, do we have any follow-up questions? All right. And we will need to convene to executive session.
I think the motion is to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment and a particular person.
No second. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming.